I'd like to adopt the agenda with one addition that we had a closed in session as per section seventeen of the Freedom of Information Act and in accordance with the section one ninety-seven, section two of the municipal government.
Okay, insert the additions that we need to make to the agenda. All right, seeing none. Michael, are you in favor? Okay, I figured you were because you made the motion. I just wanted to double check. And just before we go to... Crystal is our delegation and I just wanted to, uh, I guess, mention and give kudos to our region. I was noticing that today... Delegations. And thank you for joining us, Crystal.
Can you for half?
Yeah, I'm going to throw it open to you to, uh, and let you go.
All right. Hi, Mayor Council. My name is Crystal Seklisch. For those who don't know me, I have, I'm a longtime resident with the town of High Prairie. However, I am away in Michigan right now finishing my masters in public administration. So, of course, because I still have all of my ties to the town of High Prairie and I love it so much, um, I do want to extend an opportunity to Mayor Council. Uh, and right now I'm taking a strategic planning class. And so this is giving me the allowances to supply a strategic planning session with the town of High Prairie. Now, if you're not comfortable with it, that's totally fine. Just let me know. Uh, it's gonna be a fast-paced thing. Things are gonna change weekly. I get my courses and my modules um, every week in this eight-week class. So hopefully by the end of the, well, I'm thinking in the seventh week, I should have a full strategic plan for the town of High Prairie, uh, and team, I believe. Um, I don't know if it will be as, or will have that allowance to make it as detailed as that. However, I do want to, um, create this as being focused, um, more on the understanding and direction of the town of High Prairie, understanding your purpose and the value. It's ultimately a plan as a guide to work with, within the town of High Prairie. It's a living document, of course. Um, so I want to examine the threats, obstacles that the town is going through right now. I also want to, um, identify some of the internal, uh, environment that's happening, um, the leadership changes, revenues, um, your stakeholders. I want to talk about all of that stuff. And also kind of, um, have a look at your vision and mission statements again, and just see if that's still where the town of High Prairie is at, all these years later. And I kind of want to give you guys the opportunity to create your five-year plan in this time that's happening right now. Where do you guys see the town of High Prairie in the next five years? What are some major things that you want to see happen in the town of High Prairie in the next five years? And how can we make those things happen? I also would like to, um, touch on a SWOT analysis and try and move forward with that as well. So, um, I'm hoping that if you decide to move forward with this, it's gonna be a lot of, um, emailing back and forth. Um, there's gonna be some deadlines, just because I'll need to keep my deadlines for my class, uh, and lots of communication. So it'll be a lot of emailing back and forth. I may want to host a little Zoom session like this, just so we can all get together and collaborate and talk about next steps. So it's cooperation with you and cooperation with me if you guys feel that that's something you'd like to move forward with, of course. Um, uh, it's a free, I'm not charging anything. And I do have the help of my teachers as well to help me keep focused and to help me, um, give you guys the best strategic planning report at the end of the eight weeks.
All right, thanks, Crystal. That's a, it's a great offer. I, I like it. I just want to be clear on, on what you think the requirements will be for our council, just so that everybody's aware.
Um, yeah, so I did get a chance to talk with the C A O a little bit, Rod. Uh, we, we got to chat this morning, which is nice. We met. Um, and I think it's more on how, what I need from you guys is just, I need you guys to be open and available. So, um, I'm thinking in order to make sure we all have this, um, that we're all getting the information at the same time and we're all able to, um, have our own inputs, um, I'm, I'm hoping, or I'm thinking that maybe we do like a, a Google Drive thing. Um, if everybody has a Gmail, then that's, that's easy, that's simple. Um, I guess what I need from you guys is just your, your honesty, your, um, ambitions, your, um, you know, your, your direction, your descriptive, um, your descriptive opportunities for the next five years. I guess that's, I want you guys to really focus on the vision and where you see yourselves in five years with the town of High Prairie, or where you see the town of High Prairie in the next five years. That's what I, I need.
Okay. We often, when we've done our strategic planning, would take a day or two and sit down and brainstorm, but you don't see that as being a, a full day or two to go through this. It would be maybe one or two Zoom meetings and a few, uh, you know, emailing back and forth. Is that kind of how you see it working?
Yeah, yeah. So how I, this is how I, how I see it, um, because I know not everybody has that amount of time. We can't all be sitting at our computers for hours on end, um, negotiating and discussing. So, uh, what I would like to do is send everybody like a survey and get everybody's full ideas. So everybody has their input and then we meet, so then we can discuss those ideas. And then we're staying a little bit more focused on what the meeting is going to be about without moving, you know, going all over the place when we're in our discussions. So, um, I do want to do Zoom meetings, absolutely, but I don't think we, we need a whole day or two days to have it done. I think if we stay on top of the, uh, forms and, and questions that I hand out to each counselor or administrative manager or the C A O, I think we should be quite successful in meeting our deadlines. Another thing that I did want to ask you is if you, if we do move forward, do you want it to just be a council, um, a council input? Or would you be looking for input from your management teams as well?
Yeah, I, I mean, that would be something we'd have to work at and, and talk about once, if we get the go-ahead there, but...
Yeah.
So when do you need the, the definitive answer for, so that you can move ahead? I, I'm, I know, uh, I think it's a great idea, uh, and I'm all for it, but we should have a...
I would hope, yeah, I would hope to have a definitive answer by Thursday at the latest, if that's okay. Just because then that gives me time to, if you, we choose to move forward, definitely. I've got some time to... Fall back before the end.
I'll just throw it open to see if any, uh, counselors have any questions or comments for Crystal.
Just really... Donna has her hand up.
Oh, there we go. Um, I mean, it's, it's been, if twenty fourteen was our last strategic plan, um, we're probably a little outdated again in terms of what, what we're looking for and what we want to see. Um, I like this idea. I mean, it doesn't, it's not gonna cost us anything, which is nice. Um, and I think we should give it a shot and see where it goes.
All right. Counselor Long. Nice seeing you again.
I know.
It's, uh, it gives, gives us an opportunity to give back, right? And, and that you're willing to include us in your education and then towards the end of your education. It's, uh, it's nice to see. And so hopefully we can help you out and you can help us out. I think it'll be great.
Yeah, all right.
And that's all I got.
It is a way to win IC, so it's good. All right. Well, thanks, Crystal, for that. And, and we'll get an answer to you before Thursday.
That sounds great. Thank you, guys, for having me. Have a good meeting.
Yeah, thanks for joining us.
Take care.
Bye.
All right. Uh, do we have any other public delegations? No? Okay. All right, then we'll move on to our fire chief's report. And, uh, can I get a motion on this? Counselor Gilroy.
Where's he? Oh, there he is.
Uh, I've been here for, I heard the last presentation, Counselor Long. Okay.
I didn't, yeah, I can just...
That's okay. Okay, so, uh, I make motion that council receive the fire chief's February twenty-twenty-one report for information.
All right, I'll throw it over to the chief for any comments, uh, and highlights before we turn council loose on their questions and comments.
Okay, um, so just, uh, just a couple of quick, uh, highlights. Uh, we've got our alarm system up and active and that's been, uh, kind of a little bit of rest and reassurance because we have had, uh, break-ins in and around the, the area. Uh, not immediately, but like Grand Prairie to, uh, that, kind of that, um, circumference. So that's been up and operating. Um, got the invoice from Grand Prairie Dispatch and it was kind of interesting. Uh, I requested to actually see the contract because I had never seen the contract. And, uh, our billing is based on population. Uh, so that's, that's basically where a majority of that comes from. Uh, and they have a, a four percent increase, uh, every year. And we're in, uh, contract till twenty-twenty-three, so, uh, there will be a four percent increase, uh, each year. That's, that's in the contract that's been signed. Um, a little bit of, uh, bad news, and I guess, uh, last meeting, uh, I kind of alluded to that. And that's regarding the, uh, engine. Um, long and short of the story is, uh, the company that was contracted to build the fire truck, built it eleven, built the hose bed eleven inches higher than what it was spec'd out to be. Uh, debated, I had some discussions with Rod, debated on whether or not we accept that or we tell them to fix it. And we've decided that they need to fix it and make it right of what was signed off on specs. Uh, I asked for some kind of an answer and they gave me, uh, yesterday, uh, an email saying that, uh, to fix the air is gonna be about ten to twelve weeks, uh, turnaround time. So that's kind of the update with, uh, the fire engine. Um, on a bonus, on a good thing, on a good note, uh, we have our twelve S C B A in. Uh, we've had training on it and, uh, my members are really, really happy with that. And, uh, we have also got our new airbag system in. And again, we've had a training on that. And, uh, we've got that in service. So that's, that's kind of a, a, a bonus to, uh, to have. And, um, had a meeting with Heart River Housing and, uh, I, I could be a discussion point. Uh, Brian, you were there, uh, or Mayor Pisanosik, you were there, uh, on some of the discussions. Uh, I was requested there to have some input on fire protection systems and the ultimate, the installation of a hydrant or standpipe. But there is essentially one hydrant that, uh, that feeds both the sprinkler system and what our, our trucks can connect to unless we have some kind of a workaround that we can access the hydrant on Forty-seventh Street. So, uh, I think Lindsay is still trying to work something out and see if, uh, I guess a, a cheaper option, uh, is available. And, uh, I think that's pretty much the highlights. The rest are in my report and I submit the report for, to council.
Okay, thank you for that. And I'll throw it open to council for questions or comments. Counselor Corley.
Trevor, you said the, the hose rack was eleven inches too high. Was it the hose rack or the base of the hose rack?
The base of the, of the hose bed. So, um, yeah, it was eleven inches. So when we stood on the tailboard of the truck,
Yep.
to reach the, the bottom, like the hose bed layer, was as high as my hands could reach. So it was seven feet. And, uh, Mike and I, you know, uh, we, we bantered about it, tried to do a workaround and you know, it's like, we, we know the ramifications. I knew the ramifications was it's gonna delay. It's a pleasant thing. It's kind of taken all the excitement out of the new engine, uh, having to make, uh, this decision. But I, in, in the long run, I think it's the right decision to do.
Yeah. What was it? Why, what was the purpose that I just offset? Pump equipment inside? They had to get it higher or what?
Well, I signed off on a blueprint, uh, and, uh, their reasoning was that the water tank determined the height of that bed. And I told them, I said, if you guys would have come back and, and, and asked me which would be my preference, the water, uh, sir, the hose bed height or the water tank? I said, we need to have that hose bed lower. So we are going to be going with a smaller water tank. And the reasoning for that is it's an in-town truck. We're gonna be hooking up to hydrant supply anyhow.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, that's the compromise, but on the same token, I think, uh, it's the right, uh, the goal. But it is, uh, to keep...
All right, uh, anything else, council? Counselor Gilroy.
Uh, I noticed that on February ninth, you had a couple of EMS lift assists. Is that becoming, is it, they're what, two hours apart? Uh, is that, is that gonna become, um, more of a consistent item for you? Because it's kind of strange that you have two accidents on the fourth and then two lifts on the ninth. And it's just, it's just kind of a weird coincidence there.
It is, uh, and, and no, that's, that's generally not the trend. Uh, it could have been a full moon that day. I'm not sure. Um, but we had two, actually, it was two elderly people that needed assistance. Uh, or the EMS people needed assistance with the elderly people. And it was just the way the stars aligned, uh, as far as I'm concerned. Like, we, we are there as a, as a, to augment the EMS system if they've got a hard, hard position or difficult situation that we're there to help them out, so.
Okay, one other question, and I guess this always looks, uh, Counselor Corley was talking about. Um, in the original design, did they have that size of a water tank? Um, because I'm, I'm thinking that if, I just wonder if they're gonna actually, uh, say that because we had to change water tanks, we then have to charge you extra money. Is there any extra cost to the town for their mistake on the fire truck?
Well, that's basically how this started. Mike and I went down there. We tried to do a workaround. And the workaround discussion, they came back and said, well, you're making alterations to the vehicle. We're gonna charge you this much. And, uh, I said, wait a minute. I says, we're trying to work around your error. Uh, that's not going to happen. You're fixing it at your expense. So, um, there is, uh, they, they, they do have, um, basically do all the work. That's at their expense. Uh, Rod and I have been in discussions, uh, of, you know, of, of how's it impacting the arrival of the vehicle and stuff like that. So, uh, we're, we're trying to, to get the best thing for the town, essentially.
No problem. Thank you for that.
All right. I had a question for you and it's, uh, in your report, you made mention to the funeral home construction. I'm just, what, what is that? I'm not familiar with that.
Uh, actually, I wasn't aware that, uh, that there's a funeral home being, um, I guess the old, uh, Roanoke building is being retrofitted and it's being made into a funeral home. And, uh, the contractor had some blueprints and stuff and he had safety codes in there. He wanted some clarifications on some of the fire stuff. So I went over there. We had a discussion. I called the safety codes guy. Uh, we had some discussions. We kind of clarified some things for the contractor.
Oh, okay. Thank you. No, I didn't know about that at all. And then, uh, one other question. I know we got the new airbags in, uh, and, but, uh, one, anything about, do you, do you, do you, do you, are they in the newer Jaws of Life? Any of the new vehicles and the technology we were talking earlier made me think of it.
Um, so we do have a set of spreaders and cutters that are the newer. Uh, our backup ones, the cutters are actually, uh, on, on the service report said that the piston is leaking and will eventually have to be replaced. Um, that's gonna be, have to be something in, in the future that, uh, that has to be looked at and basically stay up with technology. I have talked to the Homatron rep and, uh, I, I said, is there, is there an expiry on, on hydraulics? And essentially it was, answer was not really, as long as they're serviceable, uh, and serviced, uh, and can do the job and keep up with the technology. So, um, like I said, our, our, our spare set, uh, he said it's probably gonna be difficult to find parts for. Uh, and as well as our compressor, or sorry, not compressor, our hydraulic, uh, pump. Uh, he says an awesome pump. Uh, it is actually twenty, twenty-two years old, I think. And he says it's an awesome pump. He says, but to find parts for it is likely going to, you know, get difficult if, if we do have any issues for it. So, uh, as you said, outside of that, like it's, there's no expiry date on it. It's just that if, uh, if we can't get parts to fix it, then that's gonna become an issue. And the trend with all of the hydraulic stuffs is, is going to, um, cord, or sorry, battery, battery packs. And, um, it's kind of a new thing, but it's gonna work out to be a wait and see and, uh, see what sort of the, you know, the, the longevity of the battery packs and stuff are. So it's kind of a new thing and I'm just, uh, waiting on it. And Jason with the county, uh, is also looking at this and, uh, considering, uh, capital dollars being set aside potentially for that.
Okay, thanks. No, I was just asking because I had heard, uh, that some of the new technology, yeah, I see you. Mike, I'll get you in. But the, the new technology won't necessarily cut through some of the, the technology in the new vehicles. And, uh, one of them is, uh, is Volvo. So I'm being a little selfish, wondering, making sure I can get, oh, if, if needed.
We have work, we have workaround techniques that we've, that we have to, uh, implement when we can't cut.
Okay. Counselor Long. Go ahead, Counselor Long. Go ahead.
Um, just back to, to the funeral home construction. Are, are they looking at a crematorium as well or is it just, uh, mortuary?
Uh, I didn't see any up and inside of there, so just, just the, uh, the display and, and ceremonies and stuff.
Yeah.
Did you, did you get that?
Hey. Yeah, I did.
Seeing no more questions. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Danaka.
I make a motion that council approve the minutes of the February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting of council as presented.
All right, any errors, omissions? Somebody has noted in there? I don't see any. All in favor? Okay, that passes. Moving on then to item eight point one, the Emergency Management Advisory Committee. Get a motion on this one? All quiet at the front. Counselor Gilroy.
Um, I'd, I'd be glad to make the motion. However, I need names, don't I? Further motion? So how do we, are we gonna do this? Do we ask for names first, Brian? I've been there, Brian, or do we just? Two, uh, two counselors and one, um...
Will in the needs, a friendly amendment, uh, to put it through once we have the discussion.
Okay, I'll make the motion that council appoint, uh, two members or two council members and one alternate council member. Or one council member as an alternate and the C A O to sit on the Emergency Management Advisory Committee.
All right, thank you. So based on that, eh, and you sort of see the time commitments, is there people that are interested in being on that committee?
Yeah.
Not everybody's putting up open, Counselor Gilroy.
Yes, sorry. I've been talking about this for so long and I'd better be on the committee.
All right. Is there anybody else interested here? I see, I see Counselor Corley with his hand up.
Uh, should the mayor be on this one since it is such an important committee?
Uh, well, I, I could be. I was thinking that maybe somebody that wasn't on quite as many, as many committees, uh, might want to jump on this one because I am on quite a few. And I thought I would let others go if they were interested in it. If not, I could, could do it, but... I don't see a whole bunch of, oh, Counselor Long, you're interested? Okay, so that, go ahead, Counselor Long.
I'd be willing to step up, I mean, until October. So, yeah, I, I would step in the opposite side.
Okay, thank you. And Donna, you wanted to, or Counselor Danaka, you wanted to speak?
No.
Nope.
Oh, okay.
Nope.
Okay, so what I've heard then is we've got Counselor Gil... Okay, so what I've heard then is we've got Counselor Gilroy, Counselor Long, and I'm willing to sit as an alternate if needed. Does that work for people? I see one thumbs up. All right, so uh. We have a friendly amendment to the motion in the motion. Okay, all in favor? All right, thank you. So moving on then to our fire protection bylaw. Can I get a motion on this one? Counselor Stenhouse?
The council give first reading to the bylaw zero eight dash two zero two one to the fire protection bylaw this ninth day of March two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Counselor Gilroy?
Uh, yes, there's a couple of clarifications I'd like. Um, page five of fifteen, number seven, powers of fire guardians. Okay, have we found it?
Okay, uh, I guess that would be either our chief or the C A O that would handle that. I'm not sure which one wants to address it. It's more specifically, what are you asking about, Counselor Gilroy?
Well, for, for example, I, I, I have trouble with the wording of seven point one. And uh, some of the seven point two, I have some, uh, some concern about it. It, it's, I'm looking at each, it says each fire guardian upon direction of the fire chief or designate shall have given access at reasonable hours to both public and private places for the purpose of inspecting the premises to ascertain whether the same constitutes or is likely to constitute a fire hazard. Um, I, I would like to have, to have some sort of guarantee that there will be some sort of written proof of being designated, for one thing. And I'm looking at the um notice, what kind of notice will they be providing to the public or private residents if they'll be coming in?
Um, so if, if it's. So if I can comment on that, uh, I, I did a little bit of research in regards to that. And uh, that section, both the fire guardians and the power of fire, fire guardians uh were insisted upon by the county. Uh, fire chiefs, both John Gould and Lee Tobin in the past, link between the town uh and, and the counts. And I called uh Ken to find out, came from, and that's the county fire chiefs. And uh, essentially the, the, the close working relationship with the county and the town. We do not actually have a fire guardian in town. The county has the fire guardians. So uh, if nobody is a, is, is appointed as a fire guardian in town, then all of the fire services is the whole, the, the whole agreement, the I C F agreement is, is being reviewed. Uh, so that may have potential ramifications uh on this, this clause. I guess that's your questioning. Um, but does it apply to the town? Does not.
Is, I think people have the, first of all, we need to, if, if I'm gonna have someone come to my door and say, we're coming in to inspect it, I wanna know who's authorized it and not just say, oh, well, the fire chief said I could come in. I want something that actually says that they are authorized to come in and do the job they're supposed to do. So I would like that in there. Um, secondly, when we're going down some of these things, if, uh, for example, in F where it says spend or cancel any type of fire permit, I think there needs to be a written reason to the resident if you're gonna cancel it. Something so that it's not just, well, you're not doing it right. We're canceling it. See, I'm, I'm looking documentation for a lot of these things and as, as citizens, uh, there are a lot of things here that um concerning, for example, G as well, without a warrant, enter on any land and premises except for private dwelling for the purpose of discharging his or her duties under this bylaw. Would that include garages and sheds or is that considered private residence? I, I, I'm not trying to be nitpicky here, but I'm trying to make sure things are spelled up so we don't have to go over this again. So there's just, just a couple there. Um, I know there's some other ones we have in there. But also even in nine point seven, um, if we go over there, the control of fire hazards. Um, so it's saying that you should not have in your possession, sell, offer for sale, give away, or otherwise distribute, discharge, fire or set up any type of fireworks or fire techniques within the town limits, etc. So when it's saying in his or her possession, does that mean that someone buys it in town and say they're on their way out of town but get stopped for any reason? They can get a ticket for having it in there, even though there's no way of proving that they were gonna use it out of town as opposed to in town. Because then what happens is people will only buy it from the place outside of town. And I believe some of our, uh, some of our own businesses do sell these things under the um, under the law that, or under the bylaws. So I'm just trying to figure this out.
Okay, I, I, I'm going to, Counselor Stenhouse has been patiently waiting to, to chime in on this. So I'll let her go and then we'll come back to this because I think she might have some answers to your questions there.
Yeah, so I did. I went through this bylaw with the fine tooth comb and I had many questions to the C A O and the fire chief. And I wanna make an amendment to this bylaw. But first of all, I wanna go back to some of the points that you made. So the fire guardian. I was arguing the point with the fire chief and C A O that we don't have a fire garden guardian and it doesn't apply to the town. Can we just not remove that from the bylaw? And that's what I wanted to run past you guys is this is a town bylaw. But being that it's an intermunicipal agreement, we may need it. But I'm still leaning on the side of we don't have it, none of that stuff applies, being it's a town bylaw. Can we just not remove it? Then, this was my amendment because I also questioned person that has his or her possession. So would you like to hear my amendment to that bylaw now?
Is that nine, is that nine point seven as well or what else?
Nine point seven. And I'll tell you what else is happening. There's more to this too, but. So my amendment would be.
So before you give us your amendment, uh, what's, what's your issue with the way that it's worded?
Oh, it's possession.
It's the possession.
It's the possession because as it is, as it stated there, as Counselor Gilroy said. So the way I look at it is, it's my birthday next weekend. My parents own a farm out of town. I go to Edmonton. I buy some fireworks. For some odd reason, I get pulled over by the peace officer and have my fireworks in my vehicle. On my way out of town, that means that he can give me a five hundred dollar fine for possession of the fireworks, which I had no intention of using in town. I was just transporting them. So that's why I was asking for the amendment on that.
Okay, well, let's, let's hear, we haven't had a chance to hear. The C A O or the chief on that. So let, have them have a chance before we go into and get our proposed amendment on that.
Okay.
So I'll turn it over to the C A O or the chief if you wanna address that, those questions that uh the counselors had.
Yes, so administration um is of the same opinion. Uh, it, it wasn't intended to mean if somebody has uh some fireworks in their, their trunk when they're passing through town or um, you know, to, to provide them with a ticket. So I think it's a, it's a good pickup. Um, that should be, that should come out of it. Trevor and I talked about this and the fire chief and I've talked about it. And it's, yeah, it's, it would be a reasonable um, uh, amendment. Um, we should have picked it up before, but we didn't. Um, no, I think it was the whole intent. We just don't want fireworks going off in the town. And uh, maybe just overlook the wording, um, some unintended consequences. So um, yeah, it, it, it makes sense to amend that piece regarding the possession. You know, it's in your trunk. That's your, no intention of um, fire ammo. So.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Gilroy?
Uh, if we're working at the guardian, then we'd have to look through for everything that says fire guardian, which would include eleven point ten, eleven point eleven, which talks about a fire guardian. So we'd have to actually go through this and take out the things that do state fire guardian if we're not going to use it. Uh, and it's listed quite a bit here. Um, I did have a question for the fire chief. Um, I thought we had changed, and I could be wrong on this and I will admit if I am. Um, the, the use of a fire pit in eleven point eight. Had we, I thought we designated all that stuff to the fire department only and not to the peace officer, which would include any R C M P according to the definition. Because it says the fire chief is designate or a peace officer.
So uh, the fire permits is uh under my, I guess, job. But as far as fire pits are concerned, uh, I do need the peace officer, which is either Alan or Erica, uh, to assist me in that because there are very often times that uh residents are only available to have their fire pits inspected in the evening. And uh, they work in the evening. So that's the reasoning why that was left in there.
Okay, no, appreciate the answer.
Okay, well, let's, let's swing back around. We never really nailed down the fire guardian uh issue. Um, what, what we've heard is the town doesn't have fire guardians. Uh, but the county has fire guardians and they want us to leave this in. Uh, but uh, I'm just thinking out loud here, if a county fire guardian would not come into town um, to do any of these kinds of uh issues. So should we be taking this out is what I'm wondering, right? Like we, help me out, understand the fire guardians and why they might come into town.
So as far as, as uh, having the fire guardian in there, uh, my intent of having this bylaw reviewed was to uh, clean up the fees for services and uh adding the uh fire lanterns. And I pretty much left everything else as was what previous council uh had approved. So uh, I left the fire guardian in there. Again, I did some research today, find out some history behind why it was there. And, and essentially what I got was that it was the link between the town and the county. Uh, as far as us having, like I said, a fire guardian, we don't have the fire guardian in town. Uh, and it essentially doesn't apply to the town. Uh, would I be opposed to having it entirely removed? No. Um, but I left it in there because it was there prior.
All right, Counselor Gilroy?
Would it make sense to amend that to a town guardian? Therefore, it, it differentiates from the county? And if we're not gonna have one and you wanna leave it in there, it specifically is someone who is appointed by the fire chief in the town and only works in the town. Would that be a good?
Well, we don't have fire guardians. So why would we uh put something in for fire guardians? I guess that's, that's the way I'm kind of looking at it. If we don't have fire guardians, uh, we don't need to identify their powers. That would have to be identified in the, the county uh fire protection agreement and, and not necessarily the towns.
I was just adjusting the fact that you said that the intermunicipal might want this in there. And then if, if the county wants this in intermunicipal and we cannot convince them otherwise, the best way would then be to change it to a town only so that we've only authorized a guardian from the town and not county to work through this. So it's just a compromise if, if they will not move it.
Uh, do you see, oh, Counselor Corley?
Well, Trevor's fine with taking it out and uh, we have no real purpose for it. Simplify the bylaw. Just take it right out. Reamend it and uh, take it out, simplify it. And then there is no more background, whether we need it or change it or, or prove it. Just take it out and uh, and make it our own. That's simple.
And I'm not opposed to that uh from the information that I got today. But like I said, why it was left in there is because it was left in there or, or it was there in the, in the uh original document. So um, I didn't mess with it, mess with it, I guess, is what uh my point is.
No, it's funny. Every time you go through uh, you know, a bylaw or something and you read it from a different perspective and then you go, why did, I mean, we approved this bylaw before and it never came up as an issue. Uh, this particular time it's coming up as an issue. Um, but it's, it's worth having those discussions for sure. Counselor Corley has got something more to add in?
Yeah, I was just curious that in the past, um, was that just a terminology for whether it was a, a member of the fire department? Not necessarily the chief or a representative of the fire department? Is that why it's a fire guardian instead of just a firefighter?
A fire guardian, uh, basically the county appoints fire guardians and uh, according to the, uh, I think it's the M G A municipal act uh, that municipalities are uh required to have fire guardians. Uh, that's why the county has fire guardians. And but again, I'm not uh totally up legal deagle on whether or not it applies to the town. Uh, but for some reason, the county fire chiefs insisted that Ken had this, uh, had this in the bylaw. So that's why he had it put in. So I, I mean, uh, I, I would have to do some, a lot of uh question answering whether or not we have to have something like that.
Uh, maybe we should do that research first, maybe before we strike it out. I don't know. Maybe it's in the M G A that we have to have a fire guardian. I don't know.
I, I had a quick look at the uh, uh, force protection act. It's actually under the force protection act.
Okay.
And, and I need some help with interpretation of that, whether or not it does apply to us or not. But again, for some reason, both county chiefs insisted that, that it was put in there. Uh, and, and that was a discussion with Ken.
Okay, well, must be a purpose. So I guess we should find out the purpose, I guess.
Yeah, uh, you bring up a good point there. Or like, like I'm in maybe the fire chief with, it might tie in like as a, as a firefighter or you know, the chief.
Representative of.
Yeah, a representative of our fire department wants to go on some land to, to inspect for something. Uh, they should be allowed to. And does this uh bylaw allow them to go on to the land for the purposes? And or are they calling them fire guardians uh as firefighters going in there if they're a designate of, of, of that department? So I see Counselor Long's got his hand up.
Under the M G A, is there a designation?
Under the M G A, is there a designation in the M G A that speaks about fire guardians? Because that makes it simple if it is. If it isn't, then you don't need it in there.
Actually, I might stand myself corrected, I think it was under the Fire, uh, Forest Protection Act, not the M G A.
Perfect, okay. So it is something that's, that's designated throughout the province as, as a, a, an actual title?
Yes. Yeah, it is in the Forest Protection Act.
But the Forest Protection Act refers to the Greens zone, not necessarily, it doesn't apply to towns and cities. So I don't think that has overriding effect here. I could be wrong, but I don't think that it does. So we have some questions on this one, so I can see where we're gonna go. We can give this, uh, some, some first reading, but we'll want it to, to be reviewed, especially that fire guardianship and, and bring it back once we have some answers around that. Uh, so we had that one and, uh, the possession, we wanted that one cleaned up also. Uh, was there anything else other than those two points that we wanted to see addressed? Councillor Gilroy?
Um, I just, actually, I wanted a little more clarification on the recovery of costs. Um, so, I mean, if it can go back to the bylaw committee and we can look it over and just finalize it so it can come back, I'd be happy that way.
Well, we can probably get some, some clarification here, so it doesn't have to go back to the bylaw committee. I mean, is there, what are you wondering about with the recovery of the costs?
Um, something has to do with, are we actually following through on this stuff? Um, but I was looking at thirteen point four, that, um, the money can actually go against, uh, the property. The town may recover such cost or fee as a debt due and owing to the town. And then I was a little concerned about, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it, to me, it does sound like a lot to say, if you don't pay it within a year, twenty-four percent interest is any, what are you ever gonna end up paying? Two percent a year, um, being put on, um, on the tax roll. And I think that's in relation to, we've already had two episodes where people have come to us about these costs. And I'm a little concerned about that, so I just wanted clarification. I was thinking maybe a bit high to do twenty-four percent per annum? And, um, the other part was asking admin to double check to see if thirteen point ten is what we actually do, which is all monies generated by the fire department will be above the annual budget and will go into the fire department budget. Are we actually using that? Um, or is it, are we skipping that one? Because that, we come up with those questions every year when it comes to financing all the, uh, things that the, uh, fire department needs. I wanna make sure they get the money that do.
Okay, so three parts there, I'll turn it over to C A O or the chief to respond.
Yeah, so the, the monies do go into the fire department, we, we, we keep them separate. Um, as far as the, the penalty rate, I mean, yep, that, that can change. I think one of the things that we, here's how these typically do, is have, uh, higher interest rates, um, as a motivator for people to pay, uh, you know, we're not a common response is, we're not a financial institution, we're, uh, we have bills and so we want to collect. We strongly encourage people to go to the bank, um, that you can get, you can borrow money for, well, more just now you can get for one and a half percent, but, uh, you know, line of credits maybe as high as three or four percent. So really, I think we really discourage people to, uh, you know, pay bills like here, go to, to another means. But, you know, that, that, that can be changed. As far as putting on a tax rule, that's, uh, that is in the M G A. Um, I don't think I, I think I've seen, I, I haven't seen a municipality not do that, so that's strictly a M G A requirement, so. Those pieces, I mean, yep, the percentage you can change, the other stuff is pretty, pretty M G A-ish, I guess.
Yeah, and by the fire department budget, my understanding is that goes into sort of that capital replacement budget. Is that right? It's not into the operating budget?
Oh gee, Trevor, can you, can you help me out on this one? You and I have sat down probably two or three times on this one. Um, part, parts that go into the capital, parts go into the operating?
Well, Rita's on here too, she's gotta be listening, but, uh, as far as I recall, the motor vehicle collision stuff goes into, uh, that, uh, that, that fund. Uh, but as far as structures are concerned, uh, the county is wanting to have that go back into operating. Uh, that's the discussion point that has to be clarified with, uh, when the I C F agreement is, is hammered out. Uh, Rita, can you help me out, is, am I correct on that?
That is my understanding.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a little bit of both, some's going into operating and some's going into capital replacement. Currently.
Yeah, currently, yes.
Okay. So anything else? We had those two issues that we wanted to address, we had some questions on, uh, some other sections. Any other questions before we, uh, vote on first reading? Oh, we get for Claire House?
Oh, sorry.
Oops, sorry, go ahead, councillor Stan House?
But before you vote, could I do my amendment?
Yep, you can suggest your amendment because they can take that and then they'll bring it back with the next reading, but read out your amendment so that they, they hear what you're proposing.
Okay, so this is referring to nine point seven. And my amendment is that council makes the following amendments to bylaw zero eight dash two zero two one, the fire protection bylaw. Remove the words have in possession from section nine point seven and also replace the existing wording from appendix A required to report section nine point seven to unauthorized sale. Offer to sell, give away, or setting up any type of fireworks or fire lanterns within the town limits. So if we agree on this, this will also be removed from the fee in the appendix A. Are you following?
I think so, yeah. Okay, well, I'm gonna leave that with, uh, C A O and the chief to, to bring that back. Uh, they can, if, if it fits in with, uh, the next bylaw committee meeting, they can certainly run it through that and bring it, you know, run it through there. Um, and before we vote, I gotta, I see councillor Courtney's got his finger up.
Just wondering why, is that, that's, is that not stating what the law says? Why do you wanna remove that?
Remove what?
Do you? Wanna remove the word possession?
Yes, remove the word possession and also correct it by saying.
Well, it's illegal to possess?
But we, do we wanna remove that? Because we were talking about, you, you're just transporting it, right? It's not illegal to go and buy a case of beer and take it out of town, you're just transporting.
You can have fireworks on it, it's not illegal to buy fireworks.
There's illegal to buy them in town.
Yeah, but you could buy them and you might be keeping them in your house for a week because you're gonna go out on, for your birthday party and, and light them off somewhere safe after.
I'm gonna cross my property line and light them off?
That's right, go that ten feet over and.
Yeah, right? Okay, all right. This question.
All right, okay, councillor Gilroy, one more?
Actually, councillor Courtney has, has a, an interesting point there because we're thinking about this as transport. What if you catch the people as they're about to, uh, set them off in J C Park or somewhere else? They're in possession of the particular, uh, fireworks that they should not have. So I, I think we're confusing transport versus people actually, um, being able to, if they're in town, set them off and we catch them before they set them off. So, uh, I just, just actually, I can't believe I'm agreeing with councillor Courtney, um, but he has a good point there. Uh, the only other one, uh, sorry, I forgot, this one is ten point one. Uh, and, and that is the requirement to report what kind of, what kind of property damage are we talking about? Is there, is there a dollar value? For example, if, if, uh, say Brian stove, the mayor's stove catches on fire, it's done property damage as he puts it out. Is it to be reported? Like, there should be some sort of maybe dollar value or something that differentiates that from, cause we also have had a number of fires where people have, the fire department's been called for cooking incidences that haven't, you know, that have been contained, but haven't done a lot, made a amount of damage. So what exactly, what amount or what kind of thing actually has to be reported to the fire department when it comes to damaged property?
I can comment on that, councillor Gilroy. Um, that actually comes directly from the Safety Codes Act under the Administrative Items Regulation, section nine and ten. So the word, that wording is, is essentially directly from that. And it states exactly, uh, in there, there is a requirement to report any damage loss, uh, so. Um, that's what they have in the Safety Codes Act under the Administrative Items Regulation, so that's why it's in there. Worded like that.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we have a vote here, let's vote on giving it first reading, then we'll have it, uh, go back and we'll bring it back for a second and third reading. But, uh, we have a, um, a motion to, uh, go for first reading, all in favor? Okay, it passes. And we'll, uh, send it back to chief and administration to bring back with those two amendments specifically, just to clarify around fire guardians and make sure that we still can have people go on land or on property if they need to, firefighters. Are, are they called fire guardians or is that strictly a, uh, a county issue? And if it is, then we need to take it out. And then, uh, the possession of, of fire, of fireworks, need to address that.
I'm really upset, cause, uh, Brian, it'd be nice to, I miss the days when we got a Roman candle fight. Those old days. Lot of fun.
Yeah, that was a regal thing, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Uh, no, that was just idiot kids, that was just me and idiot.
And that's where YouTube, uh, fame is, is re- recognized.
All right, moving on then to item ten point two, which is the false alarm bylaw. Can I get a motion on this one? Councillor Gilroy?
The council give first reading to the bylaw zero nine, twenty twenty-one, false alarm bylaw this ninth day of March twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions or comments on this bylaw? Councillor Gilroy?
Trevor, I know I'm giving you a hard time, but I need to clarify these things. Uh, on page one of five, when it's talking of the alarm site, uh, each tenancy shall be considered a separate alarm site. How does that work with the apartments in our town? Whether it's, um, we know we have duplexes with multiple units or, and we have bigger apartments. How does that apply? Sorry, that's, uh, two, two D.
So basically you potentially could have, uh, a, a, a separate alarm, uh, panel from one, uh, structure to another. Um, so basically, uh, there's, there's a, I'm just reading it here, uh, single fixed premises or locations or by an alarm system. So there, there could be possibly two tenancies, uh, on that, and, uh, it's basically one system.
So that'd be one system for, say, green acres and one system for, uh, a fourplex or something like that in, in our town, right? Most of the same?
Yeah, that, that's, that's one single alarm site.
All right, uh, I had one little, like, really small thing when I looked at this as the, uh, in, in number one, it says this bylaw may be called the alarm bylaw as opposed to the false alarm bylaw. I'm just wondering why it would be called just the alarm bylaw? Because we're not talking about alarms, but we're talking about false alarms here, right? That was just a small question.
Well, um, what is determined as an alarm or what is determined as a false alarm? Uh, if smoke sets a, a smoke detector off from burning toast, is it a false alarm or is it an alarm? Because the smoke dete- the smoke detector did its job, it detected that there was smoke, so it's not false. It's an alarm.
Okay, yeah, like I say, it doesn't really change much, but.
No.
Uh, the other question I had on this is I remember we sort of went through the fees on this false alarm bylaw. And I wasn't sure if it was in the fees bylaw before or if it was, uh, part of the this bylaw. And it says that the, you know, the previous bylaw, the false alarm bylaw was zero eight, twenty eleven. And I'm thinking that we've dealt with this one bef- since then, so I don't think when this one comes into play, it's repealing zero eight, twenty eleven. I think there was a newer one in play. Maybe the council remembers better than me, but I, in my head, I seem to remember dealing with this one before.
So if I can just, uh, the, the only real change that occurred in this and, and why it's being, uh, updated, I guess, is there was a fee schedule under the, uh, alarm bylaw and we've moved it out of there and pa- placed it into basically the fees bylaw. So that's, that's essentially the only change that's happened, uh, is we've taken the fees out of this section, put it into the other one, so it just makes it a lot neater to, uh, when, when council reviews the fees that they don't have to review this one as well as things change.
Yeah, I, and I totally understand the rationale behind it. I guess my only thing about the bylaw itself is that, uh, you know, the very last sentence there, not the last one, but the, the, the statement that is, uh, just under eleven point one, uh, bylaw zero eight, twenty eleven is hereby repealed? I think we have another bylaw since then. I, I think this, this bylaw should be repealing a newer bylaw is my point. It shouldn't be oh eight, twenty eleven. Because, well, maybe I'll ask council if they remember dealing with this, but I'm sure, uh, our council's dealt with it in the last seven years. So I, I'd just like to have that checked before we give a third and final reading is what I'm saying. Okay, any other questions on this bylaw? I don't see any. Uh, we have a motion uh, for first reading, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Long? Councilor, oh, okay, I, I thought you wanted to, to move ahead. Um, the only thing, that was my only thing. I, I would be a little uncomfortable giving this third and final reading today until we know about that bylaw issue, just to make sure it's, uh, correct. But we could even give it second reading and then ask administration to, uh, to double check it and, and bring it back because I think we've dealt with this before. How's this ten hours?
So before we vote on second reading, are we calling this a false alarm bylaw or an alarm bylaw?
The, the title of it is the false alarm bylaw, but they, they've got it down there as the short title could be called the alarm bylaw.
Okay.
Because I think it's more important that it talks about the false alarms because that's really what people need to know about, right? But they might get shortened to alarm bylaws, what they're saying there. Okay, uh, well, maybe we can just leave it at that because we're bringing the other one back for second and third reading. Uh, thi- this one we can bring back for second and third reading and just checking on that, uh, last bylaw?
Yeah, your worship.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, what, we still check, but, uh, we just had Vern check out our town website and the town website still says two thousand and eleven. Uh, but you know, we, we can still go back into our, uh, you know, maybe there could have been an error in, in the process and if there was an amendment done afterwards, maybe we just didn't put it on um, our website. So we can still go back and check uh, in our files to ensure there wasn't.
Okay. Yeah, please do, because yeah, I, I, for, I remember sort of talking about this one before, but I mean, my memory isn't fantastic, so I could certainly be wrong, but, uh, I just, just have that concern in there that we're repealing the wrong bylaw. Okay, uh, so how are we going for time? Eight fifteen. Let's, let's keep pushing through here then. Uh, CAO's report and action list, can I get a motion on this one? All quiet at the front. Councilor Danakam?
Uh, I make a motion that council received a CAO Rod Wissing's report and action list for information.
Sure, I'll turn it over to our CAO and he can, uh, give us any updates or highlights that he'd like to go over.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I, I think the, uh, the biggest thing is it just regards to the provincial budget, which has gotten a lot of, uh, airtime. Um, in a nutshell, uh, over the next three years, we're going to see a drop in our MSI grant funding. Um, but the initial year, the first year, we're going to see an increase, but it's going to be further reduced, uh, the, the following two years to really overall average to seventy five percent of what we've been used to. So that's, uh, the the greatest news. Uh, probably the more immediate concern that we're going to have to deal with here over the next, uh, few weeks is they also reduced our capital operating by about, uh, sixty thousand and that is on the tax levy side. So that is something that, uh, we're going to be have to, um, discuss, I guess, before the tax rate bylaw is passed through in a few weeks. So, um, that's like probably the, uh, the, the biggest issue that's, that's facing us, uh, in the immediate future.
Thank you for that. Is there any questions or comments for our CAO and his report? Councilor Stenhouse and Councilor Gilroy?
Just wondering if you could, uh, give more information on your discussion with Big Lakes County on capital items related to the recreation department?
Certainly, uh, to the worship. Uh, the, at our last recreation committee, um, we actually provided a list of several items that required replacement. Uh, there's several within the, the aquatic center. Uh, and obviously that's a newer structure, so there's, there's things there that are required. Um, the rink, uh, the, the two arenas, especially in Sports Palace, it's a little bit more complicated. We know that there is a significant amount of items that require, uh, updating, including the, the ice pad, which is in, uh, pretty, pretty rough shape as far as the brine lines. Um, and so the direction that we received, uh, from the recreation committee is to get, uh, at least initially, although with all three structures at some point or four, and how you want to, how, how you call them, but the, like I said, in arenas, is actually get, uh, a report on what are, you know, what do we need to do, especially with the Sports Palace? Uh, to either, uh, you know, to get ten or fifteen more years out of it. Um, so once we get an idea as to how good or rough a shape it's in, um, further decisions can be made on, um, you know, are, are we going to have to put in a, a big chunk of money here to, to get that thing going? And will that actually keep us going for ten or fifteen years? Or is the bill just, uh, too big and maybe some other decisions have to be made? So it's, uh, um, so we're moving forward on that front. Uh, just to see what, what is in front of us on, on that structure so that we can make some better, longer term decisions rather than just keep throwing in, uh, money that, um, potentially, uh, depending how rough shape the building's in, is somewhat wasted. So that's, um, yeah, that, that's what we're, we're talking about. And also which items would be considered, uh, split fifty fifty and which items may be considered as, uh, town only. And so we're, we're going through that process. Um, and as we proceed through it, we'll go back to the recreation committee and depend or the intermunicipal, depending what comes out, come back to council. That help?
Okay, Councilor Gilroy?
Um, personal opinion, I think we have a, a really good CAO. And I wanna, I know how much hard work he's doing and I appreciate all he's doing in these rough, tough, uh, times. Uh, at the same time, uh, if you could just let me know or let us know a little bit more about the, uh, BSN Community Futures and Big Lakes County Administration meeting to discuss the next steps. And any other developments you think the, the town should be aware of to encourage them?
So, uh, yep, we met off over the last two weeks. I, I can't remember what day it was with the, the, the three entities and, um, you know, and wondering what type of support is, uh, our, I guess our businesses kind of want. I know BSN, for example, has had a couple, uh, webinars. I think the first one they put on, they had, uh, like three or four attendees. And the second one they put on, uh, they had, uh, none. So, uh, they're trying to plot out what maybe the next steps would be in regards to what types of support, uh, they can provide, uh, businesses. Um, so one of the things that's, uh, occurring at least at this stage, um, is we don't really want it driven by the G S P. We want to ensure that the businesses are getting what they want, to see value for, you know, attending these types of things. So the first thing that we do know, uh, that's occurred here recently is the, the federal government. And I believe the provincial government have provided some additional COVID funding for, uh, businesses. And so what, uh, Big Lakes County is taking on is to providing or developing, uh, a website where I kind of, I don't know if they call it Q and A, but a, a, a webpage indicating here's some of the things that, uh, businesses may, uh, qualify for. So they're putting that together is, is kind of an, an initial step. Um, and we're going to work together with the, uh, gee, I think it's, I think it's the BSN folks because there's some new grants with regards to, uh, training staff, uh, that they want to get out there. So Big Lakes County's doing most of the, the, the work, the he- the heavy lifting, of course. Um, and, and so hopefully they're going to be giving us this, uh, webpage that has, um, all these grants, things, things that are available to our businesses. And we'll tie into that link. And, uh, these two folks are also going to somewhat link in there or provide some support, some of those, uh, programs that are out there. So that was kind of the, the first piece that we thought we wanted to make sure that businesses had, uh, the knowledge of what's available to them.
Alright, uh, I have a few questions for you. Uh, are you done, Councilor Gilroy? Yep, okay. Uh, just, you said, one of the things, wondering how we're doing with the, the peace officer, uh, I know you were doing some advertising, just an update there. If we're having lots of applications or we, where are we at with that?
Um, well, I know that the position's been posted as far as number of applicants. I haven't looked into the file. Um, Rita's on board, so she's our HR person. So that's the, uh, she, she has access to the email. So if Rita, if you're there, maybe you could provide some type of update. I think it only got advertised, uh, last Wednesday, I believe. If I'm getting my weeks right, or maybe it was week and a half ago.
Okay, when does it close?
Five days ago. Uh, gee, I helped print the ad. Rita, you can answer, I can, or.
Just talked to, um, Alan again, and he confirmed that the dead, the deadline is, uh, Monday, March the fifteenth. Uh, we missed, uh, four applicants so far.
Okay. Well, and probably it will get more, lots of people wait till the end to apply, so that's good.
Yeah, and what we did do, um, it is, you know, we said here was the date, uh, but we also will keep it open until suitable candidates found. So, um, I find that to be a better approach because if you, um, you know, you put a deadline in there and hopefully everybody applies. But if you're running into problems that you, you know, you, you don't find the qualifications or people don't want to come or whatever it is, at least you still have it out there. So rather than having to repost something, but still have a deadline.
Okay, thank you. I was also, uh, just wondering about our arena usage now. The, uh, I know you had sent out an email saying that we had some use there. I'm just wondering how much use we're getting. I know the Red Wings a couple hours a day, but what about minor hockey and how much with the schools?
Um, so the, uh, minor hockey up until probably today, um, is in that twenty hour plus, uh, a week, so it is pretty good. Um, or eighteen, eighteen to twenty. Uh, schools, uh, since we notified them of council decision exactly two weeks ago, uh, they are, are showing up. They're using a, a lot of ice, um, as far as number hours. Uh, I did have this, they, they get, it's, they are using it every day. Uh, you know, I, I believe it's somewhere in the range of about two or three hours a day. Um, uh, so it, it is being used.
Alright, uh, thank you. One other question, you had sent out, uh, an email on our detailed property assessment audit. Uh, and I'm wondering that that was done by the province? They, they do it on every community at some point?
Yeah, uh, yeah, it's a common practice. Uh, the province has really mixed it up over the past decade or two. Uh, sometimes they do audits on specific property types. Sometimes they do a thorough audit. Um, so I guess just the overall process is every year they do audit the assessors' work. Um, they, they go through a kind of a statistical audit and do a little bit of, uh, um, depending on how the statistics look, uh, they still do call the assessors on specific issues as regards to various properties. Then they have something called the detail audit, which we went through. Um, they've really been put on hold for a, a few years because of floods. So when disasters occur, a lot of people from that area, like the, the audit branch, uh, get, uh, delegated to assist with the, you know, the floods, the fires, that type of thing on, um, it would, um, you know, estimating values of properties that were destroyed. There hasn't been a, a ton of audits lately, but, um, all municipalities go through, um, these audits. And it, before it was supposed to be once every five years, but because of a lot of these natural disasters, it's been, uh, it's not scheduled, it's not occurred. Right, and looking at the audit, it's pretty, uh, pretty standard. Uh, they always come up with, with a few things or recommendations to, to look at a little bit deeper, but, uh, nothing, uh, significant so overall. The assessed values, uh, their, their conclusion is, uh, you know, reflects, uh, market value, which is a, a good thing.
Okay, no, that was one of the things I, I did read the, uh, sort of the executive summary and that's what I kind of got out of it, that we were okay. But I just wanted your, your thoughts on, uh, I know you've got that, uh, taxation background, so I just wanted your thoughts on how we did with that and if there was any issues. The other last question I had was around, uh, Tim Hortons are really glad to hear that, uh, Transportation did, uh, approve that, uh, right away for them. That's great. And I noticed you said that they, you wanted to get IP commencing on the, the design uh, of that intersection. I thought the intersection was designed and we got the grant for that development. So I'd just like to ask about that.
So, uh, for your worship, I got, I got Vern here, so he's, uh, he's letting me cheat. Um, so, uh, I, I think it was, uh, like some preliminary stuff, but it, uh, they need to do a little bit more finer work. And they've, uh, come up with a number to actually build, uh, one of the intersections that's, uh, in that, uh, you know, two, two eighteen, two twenty arc, which is, you know, per- not great, but, uh, no, not as bad as maybe we originally thought. So we got some numbers there.
Okay, so that they had most of it done and they're, they've got the, yeah, that's why I was just wondering about why we're getting them to do more. We're not spending any more money on this, right? Or are we?
Uh, I think we have to spend a little bit, Vern? It, it, yeah, but it didn't take that long. So it's not a, I don't know who's got a number yet, but it certainly wasn't, uh, a ton of work because we only gave it to them, um, last week. So a minor amount.
Oh, okay. And that, that includes that other intersection that you referenced there too? Because I don't, nobody's ever mentioned that other intersection and, and I wouldn't want to spend a lot of money discussing it until we know that that's something that Transportation's interested in.
Yeah, no, we didn't do any, they didn't do any design work on this second one.
Okay. Okay, that was all my questions, so Councilor Gilroy's got another one.
Actually, people have been asking, myself and a couple of the councillors, um, knowing that our number is at zero and it's, Mokee's at one, I believe, and Slade Lakes at six, uh, do we have any timetable as to when our office will be open? And when we also may resume, uh, in, I want to say in-house council meetings? Any timeframe on that?
So it's interesting, just yesterday is of, I think it was just a couple minutes to five or a few minutes after five, the province, uh, relaxed some additional restrictions. Uh, very, very vague, I, I will say, or difficult to interpret. Um, the restrictions with regards to, uh, working at home, uh, that's, I don't believe those have changed. That wasn't going to be changed until, uh, stage four, I believe. Anyways, it's still recommended, uh, wherever possible for, to provide, um, to, to have people working from home. So that's still, uh, the, a mandated, uh, piece that hasn't been removed. Um, as, as far as opening within the office, um, that's something we're so far, because we are keeping some people at home, we haven't had any complaints as of yet. Um, but I mean, yeah, getting that, well, we're not at zero. I, I, I know that, but yes, it is on the website zero, but we know it, it isn't. Um, as of today, we, we know it's not. Based on, uh, uh, we've had, uh, Uh, we've had uh incidents uh with regards to rental advice that was made. To our attention, um, and so that, that is occurring as we speak. But as far as opening, uh, you know, if. We haven't had, uh, because if, if people do need to talk to our staff, uh, we have allowed them in. As if we haven't, if, if they need assistance, we've, we've brought them in. Uh, we're just encouraging them to do uh payments electronically wherever possible, but we haven't. It's not like a, a, a completely closed cell here. If there's uh residents or businesses that require some additional support. We, we, we do, we, we, we deal with them. So, a- as far as opening, um, I'm interested to hear maybe tomorrow what uh, the, the. What direction maybe the, the, the province offers, but yeah, the numbers are looking really good. And so, uh. Uh, I, has the council heard any issues with regards to um our customers being disrupted with having our, our doors closed? Because I, I know I checked even last week and, um. We have, we have not had, uh, we haven't heard, we haven't had negative uh customer uh complaints on that yet. So.
Mine was more people being curious, not complaining. So, just to let you know that one.
Maybe one of the benefits of it is, uh, you know, attempting to get more people on electronic transfers or, you know, monthly payments. Um, you know, I always look at uh. Uh, issues that uh are obstacles, uh, trying to turn them as much into a positive as possible. Um, you know, and, and the more we can do electronically, uh, makes us more, more efficient, so. Um, that's one of, one of the things that we're promoting and, uh, you know, hopefully that assists us becoming uh more efficient.
Alright, uh, councillor Courtney, did you have your hand up?
I, I did, I was just gonna say, um, you know, because we are. The governing body in town that put in the, the bylaw, our own bylaw for our mask and stuff like that. Um, I think we should be one of the first ones that. Lead, lead the charge in, in the next step, right? Um, if we figure that it's at zero, I, I, I think we should be uh. Putting our best foot forward and, and, and open up. Get things going, and that's, that's how I feel. If we, if we follow our guidelines uh to the letter. When, once that date is up, that, what is it? What is it? Thirty days after? What was it? What was the timeline on that?
Fifteen, fifteen and fifteen.
Fifteen days? Yeah, so after fifteen days past ten?
But that's a masking bylaw, Arlen, which is being run by the province right now. It has nothing to do with our bylaw. Yeah, it's a provincial bylaw for masking right now, so our bylaw is not in, in, in force.
Right, so you're saying, don't tell everybody to get back to work to take your masks off, is what you're saying?
Uh, yeah, you can't take your masks off legally at this point in time.
That's across the entire province. It, there's no difference in any municipality. It's uh. And that's one of the struggles, like when they change rules, like, you know, every, in the stages, uh, trying to interpret. Uh, some of those rules when you start getting into the, the detail pieces, but um. Unfortunately, every week, the, the province does have, uh, you know, an open session with us that can provide. Uh, a little bit more direction and, um, you know, I, I listen to those just about every time. Uh, to get feedback and then attempt to interpret uh the one pager or the two pages that they have on the website. One of the struggles that the province does have is, uh, you know, a decision is made, like the one yesterday at five o'clock or that was made public. A lot of their backup detailed sheets that are on the provincial website, they don't get updated. And uh even the staff, when we have our uh weekly sessions, it says only it takes a week or two weeks to update all those sheets. So it's really difficult, um, because a lot of the backup documents are not developed yet. So policy decision gets made public, but the detailed pieces come a week or two later. Um, so, um, it, it makes it tough, but certainly things like the ma- the masks and stuff, that's uh. That, that's a hard yes until like well into stage four.
I would just like to lead us, have us lead in some kind of normal, that's all.
Yeah, no, can't uh, can't go outside the provincial uh orders.
Well, you can, but we make the news.
Okay, any other questions or comments for our C O? Seeing none, we had councillor Danaka move his report for information, all in favor? Okay, that's carried. Let's move on to our F C S S report. Anybody want to make a motion on this one? Councillor Gilroy?
Alright, no one else is gonna do it, I'll do it. The council received the February F C S S report and monthly stats for information. And I would like to point out one thing that we have been asked by F C S S to talk about, and that is. We need to remember that it's called the Big Lakes Bus and not the seniors bus. It's for uh anybody there. And hopefully you'll see that in your package, there is also. Uh, all the information for free income tax filing service, which they're gonna make sure that that and the Big Lakes. Bus uh, uh, schedules are out where everyone can see it. Uh, income tax though is only for those people who are residents. Of Big Lakes County and or High Prairie, but uh, so. Those who are from other areas, they need to uh look into their areas. But other than that, I think they've done a good job here.
Okay, any questions or comments on the F S S, F C S S report? Alright, seeing none, all in favor? That's carried. Uh, we'll move on uh to our uh. Verbal and written reports, we'll start with councillor Danaka.
He'll report.
Alright, councillor Gilroy?
Uh, peace library system report, uh, meeting. And uh, some of the things that they had advocated for were actually, um, brought forward in. The uh, in stage two, when it came to open the libraries. Uh, interesting enough, they've also uh said that uh all. Uh, all meetings, conferences and that will be by um zoom only, well, zoom or video. Uh, no in-person stuff, so they're not going down to Jasper or stuff like that, though they're are asking some of the. Um, they're asking the regular library systems to. Uh, keep some of their funding back because they'll have to pay for speakers, just in case they're not sponsored this year, but for the most part. They will, we will not be, any market will not be going out of town, in other words. So that part of the budget uh will be probably set aside for later. Um, library board, and uh, yes, we have, we're looking at all the changes the government has allowed us to do. Uh, they've got a new sign coming up. Um, many of you know about the wooden. Sign that's outside, the uh, the wooden side that, uh. That actually, the big wooden sign's been blowing away, and so they consider that more of a hazard to the public. So they have uh chosen to get a sign that will be in the window, a fairly big sign that will. Uh, be the equivalent of what we have up outside of the uh town office. So that'll be their display board and we, we don't know when that's gonna come in, but it should come in soon. Um, the, I was, today I was at the Aboriginal Interagency and once again there. Uh, due to restrictions, the powwow is still on, but it will be, um. It will be uh virtual. Uh, they're also doing uh special services of, uh, storytelling. From different elders who will be on their website as well. Um, and. I did email everyone, um, if you remember, there was a, a famous young lady named Amy Willier. Uh, the reason I sent an email to everyone is because she was from, at least Sucker Creek. Um, and she was an artisan, they wanted to encourage artisans to start their own business, and I thought. We've got empty buildings, so let's encourage people to, the artisans to uh go for the grant. And to open businesses in our town. And so unfortunately, the deadline is tomorrow uh for that one. Uh, but it's good to see that. Um, as well, we were at the Alberta council uh briefing. Which really wasn't that great, but we were there. Um, to follow up on last meeting. I did receive a call from Heart River Housing the very next day from L Z Pratt about the um. Letter of concern from one of the residents and uh some of the work has been done and. Uh, I am keeping up on that as there, uh, as it further develops. And lastly, I met with a, a business owner in town, a small business owner in town, and uh this is more to Rod. Um, they gave a couple really good suggestions that I think council as well should think of. Um, they would like us to put on our website a list of approved tradespeople. In other words, anyone who is a trade person who has a business license with our town, put it on our website, cause it's very, very hard to find quality. Well, not quality, tradespeople, and so part of the licensing bit of that. They, they were suggesting we should put a list on our website for that, as well as a list. Of uh home-based businesses, the sort of thing where other municipalities are doing it and it helps to. Uh, remind people we do have a very active. Uh, business community, even though we don't always see it. So, that's my report. I have a report and I move it for admission.
Alright, any questions or comments for councillor Gilroy? Seeing none, all in favor? Alright, okay, um, moving on then to councillor Long.
Um, aside from the Alberta council and the uh, and the C R C, which I reported last meeting. Uh, nothing related to report, so, yeah, nothing.
Okay, thank you. Um, for myself, it wasn't as busy as some of the other weeks, so I didn't send out the written report. I can do it uh fairly quickly by verbal. Uh, from the Heart River Housing side of things, uh, they're having an information session tomorrow. I think everybody's been given an invite if you wanna learn more about the, the new construction, that's happening tomorrow by Zoom. Sort of the information session. Um, we're getting the actual costs for the build. From the contractor on the twenty fifth of March, so we'll have sort of that final price tag at that point in time. And uh, Heart River Housing off their old site is actually selling some of their garages. Uh, they need to move them off the site to make room for the, the new building. So if anybody, they have to be moved in the next little while, but if you uh. If you're interested in a garage or two and they even have a seater in there that you can bid on it and whoever gets it. Uh, will have to move it off their site. Um, we also had uh, just the other day, delivered some flowers to some of the new businesses. In town, uh, her, uh, the Soul Peace Collective. Along with Cocon's Kitchen and to Heart River Housing, cause of all of the renovations and changes they made to their building. So we did that, um, we did have the transportation meeting, we also had a meeting with uh. Doctor Niazi, uh, just to find out. Uh, what, what were the key issues for him? Uh, so that we could be prepared for our minister when he came down. And basically, nothing has changed there. It's still nurses number one. Doctors number two, and then the, the specialists number three, like the ultrasound. Uh, those kinds of special events are needed, so that's still uh his priorities. Uh, but he did mention that there are some, he is interviewing some possible uh physicians. Uh, he said there was five that he was looking to be interviewing, so that was uh. That was promising, it might lead to some more physicians in town. Uh, but that, that remains to be seen, so, but at least it's a good sign. Um, yeah, that is it for my reports. I'll take any questions or comments, councillor Gilroy?
Um, it's, this is for either you or the C O. Uh, any idea when the bid process? The old hospital will begin? Uh, I'm just curious about that because, uh, just because it's a big thing.
I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, I, I, I spoke to them today, uh, and they're still putting stuff. Together, uh, they wouldn't give me a, a date, but they, the file is open and they're, they're working on it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Seeing nothing, I'm over my report for information, all in favor? Alright, that's carried. Going on to councillor Courtney?
No, reporting.
Alright, uh, councillor Stanhouse?
No report.
Alright, okay, uh, so with that, let's take a break. And then we'll come back for our closed session.